Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the Monday, August 11th Business Meeting of the Cabarrus County Board of Education. I appreciate everyone being here. Before we adopt the agenda, I would like to recognize Louis Burgess. He's providing security for us tonight. He's our SRO at Cox Mill Elementary School. And Louis, thank you very much for being here and for the service that you provide. With that, Board members, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison.
Second.
A second by Mr. Schumaker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We will move on to the approval of minutes. Board members, I hope you've taken a few minutes to review the minutes. Anybody have a motion to approve the minutes?
I move that we approve the minutes as presented.
I have a motion by Dr. Phillips and a second by Mr. Harrison. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Okay, that, did I hear enough? Okay. That motion carries, and we will move on to reports, and we will ask Ms. Kelly Klutz to come to the podium for a budget update.
Good after, excuse me. Good afternoon. Last Monday, I presented the budget information to you, and by request, I've summarized the information that I prepared for you. And so, the document that you have before you is a fairly new document, but I've tried to summarize it for you, based on the information that was shared with you last week. What I've done is indicated the amount of fund balance we would need to use to sustain our operations with, for this budget without job loss for this next budget year, 14, 15. So the items that I documented at top are the continuation items, and those are the items that we'll just need to continue to operate. The supplements, the increase in supplements would be that to match the state increase and the local increase. So we assume that if the state gives our teachers a 7 percent state increase, pay increase, we would want to match the supplement increase. And if the county doesn't participate and fund that locally, we would then have to do that from fund balance. So that's what the asterisk indicates, is the continuation cost, or those are costs that we've asked for from the county, and we're still waiting for that funding, and we're still asking for that funding. If they do not give us that funding, we'll have to take that from fund balance, and that's what we're asking the board to consider and approve here tonight. Well, we're not asking for approval tonight. We're asking for approval in September. This is a report. The next item, items that are indicated continuation are just items that we'll need to continue to operate in the same manner that we currently are. Utility costs, retirement increase, hospitalization increase, and Hospitalization Due to Affordable Care Act. Then, the next items that are indicated on the left, state cut. We reviewed those items with you in detail last week. As you remember, as you recall, there's a 22 percent reduction to teacher assistance that would be $1.9 million to our budget. Either we have to cut that line item in our budget, or we have to replace it somehow. We're not suggesting that we reduce employment in Cabarrus County. We're suggesting that we absorb that within our system and take care of our staff here. So that's a $1.9 million loss that we have to absorb. In addition, the state cut transportation, 1 percent. They cut our at-risk allotment, 3.1 percent. They cut our central office allotment, 1 percent. And all of those, either we have to cut those positions and allotments, or we have to absorb it somehow. And so, that's what we're suggesting here, is that we don't want job loss in Cabarrus County, and we think that we need to take care of those. The next items are operational expansion, and the way that those items were selected were, if they were on our priority list, that were selected by the Budget Committee and prioritized by the Budget Committee, if they were under $100,000, and they involved staff that were, I think Blake talked about it last week, we, a lot of these staff are already in these positions, and they're doing the work. We're just not paying them for it. And they were on the budget request because we were, we already have these, they're doing this work. We just feel like we need to pay them for the work that they're doing. So, obviously, we can't do a lot of the expansion that's significant dollars, so we kept it with under $100,000, and we tried to hit some of the smaller items on the expansion list. And so, that's how these items were selected. The total, the last item is the item that we talked about with the pay increase for the 12-month and the 10-month. I think Rob Walter asked how many employees? We had 440 employees. There are 12-month employees. That would be the difference between $500 and $600, and that's a $44,000 cost. And I've had conversations with surrounding systems, and that's what they do too, is they just absorb that locally. It's just the right thing to do. Okay? So that would be approximately a $3.7 million cost to the system. We absorbed all of the state cuts. We absorbed the, if we had to absorb the continuation costs, if the county elected not to fund that, and we elected to fund the operational expansion items that are listed here, the board agreed to do those items, those things. We could do it with $3.7 million of fund balance. Okay? And I've displayed at the bottom of the document, according to the fiscal year 1213 audit report, our fund balance at the time and the categories that that fund balance is in. And so, I'll take questions or comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. Board members, any questions or comments on this presentation? We'll start with Mr. Walter.
I think we've discussed most of that last week, and I appreciate the additional information.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Ms. Carpenter, do you have a comment?
I'm sorry, 'cause I wasn't with you last week. I was on vacation. But, one question I had. On the 22 percent reduction on the teacher's assistance, is that for all grades? Is that kindergarten through first and second? What would that reduction be made up of?
The state cut the higher grades, the second and third, but we've already cut those levels. And so, we use those funds for teachers. And so, if we were going to cut in Cabarrus County, we would have to cut teachers, because we're at the minimum amount of TAs per classroom. So, we would not be able to cut TAs. We would need to cut teachers. And we, we do not believe that that's something that we should be doing right now. We should increase class, we do not believe that we should increase class size and cut teachers.
So, the teacher assistance, so they're saying, that teacher assistance, you're saying that's not teacher assistance then?
Not for Cabarrus County. Now, statewide, it is. And so, you'll find that our neighboring systems are struggling with whether they should cut teacher assistance right now. But, for us, we've traded those dollars in, and we use those dollars for teachers, and have for several years. So for us, it's a question of, do you cut teachers or not? Or do you use fund balance? Or do you ask for those dollars somewhere else? And so, we, we're at the minimum. We can't cut teacher assistance anymore than we currently have.
Totally. How many teacher assistants do we currently have? Right now, right now, how many teacher assistants do we have?
I think regular ed, Carolyn, and you're stressing my brain a little bit, I think we're at 230, regular ed, not E.C.
And those basically are kindergarten, first, and second?
Kindergarten and first is how we allocate them. The schools may use them a little bit in second, but we allocate them based on kindergarten and first.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a couple. Going back to what Carolyn was discussing, so, in summary on the teacher assistance, we would, we're, through this 1.9 million, we're actually preserving close to 30-some jobs, is that what?
That's the equivalent of teacher jobs. So, if it were a teacher assistant, it would be a whole lot more positions that you would be eliminating had you had to eliminate the teacher assistant positions. But because we converted that into teachers, it's about 35, 36 teacher positions that we are saving by not eliminating positions at this point.
And the transportation reduction, even though we're a growing system, they chose, they just did an overall state cut to the transportation budget. So it didn't matter whether you were growing or shrinking, they would just cut the budget flat out?
That's correct, across the board.
My last question is, on the appropriate for, the unassigned, is this, is that where we would extract this fund balance from the 6.1 million in the unassigned portion of our fund balance?
That's correct.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Mr. Schu, do you have any questions or comments?
Actually, between Carolyn and Barry, they've answered, you know, my questions already. Of course, we won't have an accurate fund balance until, as you said, sometime in late September, maybe. So we, do we anticipate that we'll be somewhere close to what we were?
The auditors are here, second week, I believe, in September.
Okay.
And so, they usually finalize their report at the end of September, and would be submitted to you guys in October, your October report.
You're hoping your efficiencies are going to be as good or better than they were?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir.
Because, you know, we definitely need to try to maintain, not really necessarily a healthy fund balance, but we need to maintain a fund balance, though, for cash flow and that kind of thing, at the very least. And so, I'm okay with what we're wanting to do here, and it's just a shame that we have to dip in like this. But then again, we do have to use it. We do need to use it. And so, this would be some good ways to put it to use. Thank you, Ms. Klutz.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, sir. What was Raleigh thinking? No, don't answer that. Don't try to answer that. That's neither here nor there. But I remember back in the spring, a lot of us and community members spent how many sessions planning the budget? Three or four or five? All-day sessions, planning, and apparently planning for this inevitability. And I've looked back at your numbers from back in April, and they're spot-on for what you're proposing here. For the most part, I do believe that's accurate, certainly the utility costs and other things that were exactly what we were planning for back in the spring, should we get to this point. So, I feel very good about the numbers here, and I even feel better about your stewardship of the county's resources and the administration's hard work in crunching all these numbers. The, but let's reiterate, please. These proposals only sustain these needs for the year 2014, 15. Some plans have got to be made, and I'm sure you're going to bring those plans to us over time, to deal with each of these, but this is only good for 2014, 2015. Is that, is that accurate?
That is accurate. So, we've been in this position before.
Did you have?
We've had to make cuts. And when you, when you make cuts and you use your fund balance to sustain operations, and, you know, prior to the economy failing, we would have always said, you never use fund balance for continuing operations. You just don't do that as a finance officer. You stay so far away from that. But times are different, and you have to, you have to do things that you don't like to do. And so, we're a system that's fortunate in that we have growth in our system. And there are systems around us that do not have growth. So what I do in managing the plan is I take, and when we have situations like this, we can't sustain a $3.7 million cut to our fund balance, you know, for more than two or three years, and otherwise, you're going to be, you're done. Then you're going to have to find some cuts somewhere. But if you have new reoccurring growth money coming in, you can, you can offset your growth with some of these losses. And then you mitigate those against, and eventually, you, you take care of those, that 3.7 loss. And we've done that over the years, and we can do that again.
And I gather you're also playing the role of emotional counselor to other school systems who are calling you up in a panic, that they weren't as foresightful as we've managed to be. And I commend you for that, you know, for helping them out, sharing your information and your skills across the other districts as well.
Yeah, we have a really good network amongst the systems, and we talk about the things and share ideas, and so that's certainly helpful.
Does the cut in the transportation of 1 percent, does that equate somehow to the driver's education program, or is that not addressed here?
That's not this fiscal year. The 1 percent transportation cut is independent this year from what we are going to see next year.
But not related to driver's ed?
Not, not related to driver's ed next year. So the next year's cut is the intent to remove driver's ed from our budget completely, from the state budget. And so, that will impact us about a half a million dollars. So we have this cut, which is about 90, 90-some thousand dollars, $92,000 that we have to deal with this year. And then, looking into next year, we know that the intent is to remove the driver's ed funding, which is about another half a million dollars for us. So, we're looking at that.
And Mr. Chair, I'm not sure how to approach this, but I'd like to suggest that we, through Mrs. Klutz's office, work very closely with our local legislators to make them aware of how these statewide cuts affect us locally, and beseech them to work at the legislative end to fix some of these concerns that we have in the longer term. Thank you.
I think that would be very prudent on our part. Thank you, Mr. Harrison, for your comments. Dr. Phillips?
Thank you. So, remind me, our total budget for the year is 250 million?
Yeah.
Plus or minus?
Yeah, exactly.
And that area, okay. So, if I'm understanding the mathematics right, on the fund balance, we have 6.1 million that hasn't been appropriated. You were proposing to take and appropriate 3.7 million, so that leaves us with 2.4 million, which is a little less than 1 percent of our total budget. That strikes me as being kind of lean.
So you have to take the total fund balance, not just the unassigned, when you're looking at fund balance?
Okay. But things like technology and insurance, we know that's already out the door, and, okay, there's a 3 billion that you're leaving as a cushion, I see, that's for subsequent years. That's the, for the surprises that the state legislature sends us next year.
And remember, this is, this is last year, last June 30th. And so, we'll, we'll have a new number this June 30th, and so, we're a year behind.
So, are you confident that that number will be positive?
I'm comfortable that the number is, is in a, it will be in a position where we can allocate $3.7 million, and we'll be in a, in a position that, that our cash flow will be okay, and I won't put our, our system in jeopardy.
Okay. So, that makes me feel a little better to know that there's, whatever money we've saved this year will go in addition to whatever's left from spending, after we spend this 3.7 million that you're proposing. So that's good. Okay. Remind me, what do the at-risk funds go for?
So, that's our opportunity school.
Ah, that's right.
We pay the entire opportunity school out of there. We'll pay some teachers out of there. We'll pay some assistant principals, those kinds of things.
Okay.
Software.
Okay. Because it's, it's basically targeted for the students that, for various reasons, are considered at risk of not graduating?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, you know, so the, the central office administration and that just brought to mind a question, what percent of our total budget supports the central office administration? Do you know that? I'm sorry I didn't warn you beforehand. I was going to quiz you, but...
What percent of our total budget supports?
Central office.
Central office.
Yeah.
I can get you that number.
Okay. I didn't mean to put you on the spot.
Sorry.
The reason I ask is that I suspect that a lot of people think we spend a lot of money on our central office.
Sure.
That's where, geez, if we just got that, we could have all these other things. But I believe that I've read that our central office percentage is significantly below the state average. And perhaps if you could bring that to the next meeting, just to, to inform everyone, because it's, I know when I ran two years ago, my thinking was, oh, that's where we cut. That's where we need to target for cuts that we're going to cut. And then, when I started looking at it deep, I was like, that's where they have cut.
Right.
There's not a whole lot left to do. So, and if we benchmark ourselves against others, I think we're okay there. So, anyway, if you could bring that to a future meeting, I would appreciate that. And that's the end of my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. In fact, I think we had a graph or chart of that sometime in the not-too-distant past. I can't remember. But yeah, if you want to just update it or put it in a Friday report, that would be great, and then if something, even to have at a meeting to tell the public. So, I believe Ms. Carpenter had another question?
Yeah, and, and, I'm sorry. And, Mr. Phillips, he kind of touched on the at-risk allocation. Now, is that just at one school, or are we using it at all of our schools? Because we've got at-risk students.
Sure.
At all of our schools.
Sure.
Not just at one. So is it used at all our schools? Or is it at the PLC? Or at the Glenn Center? Or what are you telling me? I mean, which school is it used at?
Both.
At both?
The answer to your question is both. We, we, there's some targeted dollars out of that at-risk allotment that goes specifically to the opportunity school. And then, there are, there's another part of that allotment that is dispersed, that I use for other, all of the schools. And so, I kind of make a decision on who I pay out of there, based on their at-risk percentage and that kind of thing. So I, I have the, you know, with, with the way that I can pay my staff and the way that I need to, I allocate them that way.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. And I believe Mr. Schumaker had another question or comment.
Kelly, just in review, the state's not going to fund growth next year, initially.
As a continuation cost.
As a continuation.
It's going to be expansion.
So it's going to be expansion. Just looking at this fund balance that we have left, since we're going to be doing a, an estimate of what our costs are, and we're going to have to go on faith that they'll fund us, so we'll have to, as a board, we will have to use our fund balance to tide us over until the state does make us whole. Is that the way it's going to have to work?
I think that's something we push hard on our legislators to change. We absolutely have to push on that one.
Well, I understand, but the reality is that we will have to make some type of good faith estimate, and I guess the fund balance will be now very important in covering the, the difference between this year's budget and any growth that we experience next year in our budget.
The reality is that there won't be an outlay of cash prior to the decision-making, hopefully. Hopefully, the budget will be passed in August, and then your teachers, and so, but you've made a commitment to these teachers, and so, hopefully, all of that would be resolved. And I think that's what the legislators are telling us, is that you're not, you're not, it's not that you're not going to get the money, it's just that the decision is made later. You're going to get the money, and that's...
Well, what I've heard and what I've read is that it's not like you're going to get the money, because it may drift off into other places.
It could. That's, that's the way it works.
And so, then, as this board, we would be liable for the difference
That's right.
Once we've made a commitment.
That's exactly right. That's why it has to be changed.
So now, our fund balance, it's very important that we're very frugal with the fund balance in the future, going forward.
Absolutely.
Because we don't know what we don't know.
That's exactly right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schumaker, and you went exactly where I was going, so I won't bother to repeat any of that. But that's, that was exactly my concern, because we, there's going to be ups and downs that we're going to project, and the fund balance is going to get really, really hairy at some point in time. Mr. Harrison, you have another question or comment?
Yes, sir, and maybe a quick one. The priorities 10, 11, and 13, additional funds for various athletic and coaching positions. How is that distributed? About how many people does that affect? Are these teachers who coach in the evenings or something to that effect? Can you explain how that's distributed?
We could go back to...
In theory, at least. I mean, according to the...
Not, honestly, not off the top of my head. Our budget documents with our justifications, we had all that detail in there, but right now, I'm just, it's not coming to me with, I'm just wondering if Donna, do you, can you, the number?
It's, you have it.
Yeah.
You know, it's in the, it's in the big, thick budget.
I can go into detail.
If you read it, and you got a question or problem, I guess, then maybe ask, send something to Kelly, and then she can fill in the gaps. But I think what you're after, you have.
So, you, when you're looking at item 12, you've got baseball, softball, and basketball. That's three for each high school, so that would be 21 positions at a minimum. And then you have one A.D. at every middle school, so that would be an additional seven, eight, excuse me?
Yeah, eight.
Eight. And then you have seven A.D.s at the high schools, that would be another eight positions. So someone could quickly add those positions up. Seven high schools, eight middle schools, three sports at each high school, 21.
Maybe male and female?
Yes.
Okay.
If you want, and the backup is there, too.
Sure.
Okay. Well, I think that, oh, Dr. Phillips has another question.
Another point that came to mind was you were talking about for next year, that, you know, we're going to be a growing district, and so therefore, we can find the funds, or we'll be given the funds for these teachers that we're hiring this year without state money. One thing we need to keep in mind and watch as the year goes on is that while we are in a growing county, we're also in a county with a growing number of charter schools. And so, there's no guarantee that the growth will come to us.
That's right.
Now, I know that all seven of us are committed to making our school system the clear choice for parents, but some parents may not see it as clearly as we do. So, that could put us in a position where it's a little scarier.
It is.
The good news, though, that I think we can keep in mind is that I understand today, we had 221 new teachers show up for the orientation session?
You were certified.
I'm looking at our H.R. director. And so, if worse comes to worse, you know, 35 teachers through attrition will be easy to cover. No one should be in fear that they're going to lose their job next year. We just may not have to come out and hire as many teachers to fill empty positions.
Right.
Hopefully, that will give us enough room that, again, no one out there should be worried for their job for next year.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And with that, we will move on to, we will thank Kelly Klutz for that report, and we will move on to 4.2, Board Chair comments, and I don't have any comments for tonight. So we're going to move on to 4.3 with Dr. Shepherd.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We're exactly one week away from welcoming all of our teachers back to school from their summer break, in two weeks from today, from welcoming our students back to the start of the new school year. And I want to remind our parents about our Back to School website. It's a great resource for information about the upcoming school year. You can find that information on our district homepage. Also, applications for free and reduced lunch for next year, or for this year, it's no longer a next year, we're in that year now, are now available online. And you can find the application link on our district website as well. There will be a small number of paper applications. We're going to try to do most of this online this year, but if, if a family doesn't have access to computer, they can access the information through paper at all of our schools. This morning, as you've just stated, I had the privilege of welcoming 221 new teachers to our school district at our new teacher orientation. And I want to thank Glenda Jones and her staff for all of their work in planning and organizing this worthwhile event. That will continue throughout the week, and I think through Wednesday. And so, we're looking forward to spending more time with our new teachers. Then after my time with new teachers this morning, I had a few hours to spend on the golf course for a good cause. Several of our Cabarrus County school staff members participated in the... in the annual summer leadership golf outing at our Cabarrus County Club, Cabarrus Country Club. All the proceeds from the golf tournament will be donated to the Cabarrus County Education Foundation. And I want to thank Dr. Kelly Probst tonight for her great work. We're going to estimate between eight and nine thousand dollars today raised for our education foundation. Thank you, Dr. Probst, for your good work. Also, I'm thrilled to announce a new teacher appreciation program that will begin this school year. The Hometown Hero Teacher Appreciation Program will recognize the commitment teachers make to their students. The program is being sponsored by Charlotte Law Firm, Charles G. Monnet and Associates, to honor deserving teachers in the Charlotte metro area. Each month, the firm will award a two hundred and fifty-dollar Visa gift card to the winning teacher in each county. The teacher's class will also win a pizza party, courtesy of Domino Pizza, and will be advertising the new program throughout our district communication channels later this week. We appreciate Charles G. Monnet and Association's generosity and thank them for including Cabarrus County School teachers and their recognition. And finally, a word about our state budget. We have one. It was passed. It was signed by the governor. And so we will be working hard to bring you our budget just as quickly as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Shepherd.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Walter.
A quick point of privilege. We have Mr. Mark Clemmons out here today with Radio Free Cabarrus and the Independent Tribune. And just wanted to get an opportunity to thank him for all the work he does with the athletics, as far as interviewing coaches and doing the games for us. And just wanted to recognize him this afternoon.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Along those lines, can I have a point of personal privilege?
Sure.
Believe it or not, a week from this Friday, first football games of the season. And having grown up in Texas, high school football is a big deal. And the first week, August twenty-second, there's going to be a game between our Concord High School Spiders and a school from Kannapolis, which is quite, the Kannapolis folks claim they want a bell that is theirs. So I would encourage everyone that wants to have a fun evening, a little bit of cost, to come out and see hundreds of our students putting out their best, whether it's on the field when they're wearing their helmets, or whether it's when they're on the sidelines cheering us on, or it's the students in the band, in the stands, and on the field at halftime. I think that you'll be amazed at what they can do.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And yes, I hope the community will come out and support all of our, all of our high school sports, football, and the other fall sports, volleyball, and then we'll go from there. But thank you for that, both of you gentlemen. All right, we'll move on to guest speakers. Guest speakers may be scheduled on the agenda of the board's business meeting by calling the board clerk at seven oh four two six two six two three eight by twelve noon on the Friday prior to the meeting. The board welcomes comments, and we thank our guests in having interest in our business and addressing the board. However, tonight, we do not have any guest speakers that have signed up to speak. So we will move on to section six of the agenda and the approval of the consent agenda. So board members, these are the items we discussed last week and put on the consent agenda. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
I have a motion by Mr. Schumacher.
I will second that motion.
I have a second by Ms. Carpenter. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda has passed, and we will move on to the action agenda. This was one policy on first reading that we had a question about the SROs and a little bit of verbiage. So we'll just ask Dr. Lauder to the podium, and we will discuss this one more time, and then go from there.
I just want to start by thanking Sue Burns for covering in my absence last week. She's our school relations coordinator, and she also takes the lead in a lot of editing and getting our policies published. And she does a great job with that and did a great job last week. So my understanding from her briefing was that you guys had, wanted to add in including school resource officers with one of the clauses in the policy. And I know we got an email from Mr. Enriquez that he was good with that. That was a good change. And as far as I know, that was the main change. And then maybe there's a question, if you had a question, we can...
That was the change. I mean, it was just to insert that, and we did have a question. We wanted Mark to look at it, so that's why we didn't put it on the consent agenda. But it was Rob's suggestion. So if you have any other further comment, I mean, I think that addresses what you want.
I don't have any further comment.
Okay. With that being said, do I have a motion to approve policy nine two two zero, security of facilities be approved on first reading as presented?
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by Mr. Walter.
Second.
A second by Mr. Harrison. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. And with that, board members, I need a motion and a second that the board convene in closed session pursuant to general statute one four three dash three one eight point one one eight three, one four three three one eight point one one eight six, and one one five C dash three nineteen through three twenty-one.
So moved.
I have a motion by Mr. Harrison.
I'll second that.
A second by Mr. Schumacher. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this board is now in closed session.